Ascom compared to what that Maroja went through, I mean, how different is it? In fact, even now, or still at the center of it up to now, people blame you for this and the other. But let's, let's hear it from you firsthand. What is the difference between your Ascom that you know and that you served as the CEO and the Ascom now? What's the difference? What's going on?
Tim, I, I think you must understand first that my association with Ascom is over thirty years. I only worked for Ascom.
Yeah.
I've seen the good of Ascom and not so good of Ascom. When I, when I became exco at Ascom 2014, the system was constrained. It was a constrained system. In other words, there was unsafe energy. We could not generate enough capacity to meet demand. In 2015, the amount of unsafe energy going checked it is 1.3 gigawatt hours. 1.3 gigawatt hours at the rate of 76 rent then of unsafe energy. The cost of the economy was 76 billion rands. So that's Ascom I inherited 2015. In the middle of the war room, Sir Isom Matunah was the CEO of Ascom. Now, I had a private conversation with Sir Isom, and I hope he's listening and he's watching. And I said to him, Chief, load shedding is like death. You don't want it in your watch. You don't want load shedding under your watch. It's like death. You can do wonderful, wonderful things. You can do good things. You can think of how good you are. As soon as you load shed, everything else gets undone. It is death. My first address to my exco, I said to them, you know, I don't care who says what. I don't care the politics. I don't care who says what. The president of the republic is Jacob Zuma. I have met him. He does not want load shedding. I don't care who says what. I don't care whether he called me Zuma person or what, but he does not want load shedding. If the president of the republic does not want load shedding, does not want load shedding, and we have a constrained environment, not because of capacity problems, because we've got enough capacity. So I am not going to load shed, and this is what we're going to do. We're going to meet the demand, and we're going to do so without burning diesel. Because by using emergency diesel generators, the way I would explain it to my team was, you are burning money with diesel. So we're going to meet the demand. We're not going to burn money with diesel, and we're going to do the maintenance. And the measure of doing maintenance in Ascom is the plant capability loss factor. That's what you measure it. If you go to the Ascom books, you will find that the highest maintenance in the history of Ascom, the record of Ascom, was in my time, and it was 14%. So we did the maintenance. We did not burn diesel. The volume of diesel in my time was the lowest at 10 million liters. Before then, we were spending 1 billion rands a month. We spent 14 billion rands a year. By the time I left Ascom, 14 billion rands a year was down to 200 million rands a year.
14 billion reduced to 200 million?
200 million a year.
Okay, that's a fact.
That's a fact. It's audited. It's in the books. You'll find it.
All right. Yeah, well, I'm just asking because, you know, you, people attack you and say you, you burned, you burned a lot of diesel during your time. So I'm just making sure that what happened.
The number speaks for themselves.
Okay.
Speaks for themselves. So, so we were able to keep the lights on. In other words, we generated enough capacity to meet the demand. Our reliability objective at the time was the energy availability factor of 80%. And in June 2016, we hit the energy availability factor of 80%. Again, it's audited. So I am at pains to see a system that operated in June 2016 at the energy availability factor of 80%. We met the demand of 35,000 megawatts, 35,000 megawatts, June 2016. Now, that's working on water to a system today that's performing at the energy availability factor of 57%. The diesel consumption is high. And if you think we've got load shedding at stage four now, the DNA of the Ascom performance is in my blood. Nobody tells me when I tweet, you know, today you, there's headlines, it says, there's a sabotage, there are people, Ascom people talking, nobody talks to me. I look at what is available, and I can tell you, you're gonna have a difficult week. So if you think stage four load shedding today is difficult, watch, wait until February 2022, when you take the Kuba units off for steam generation, for steam generator replacement, it's gonna be worse. Now, we know today, we know today that February 2022 is going to be worse, and theoretically we should be preparing for it. We're not. Tim, I thought about it, about how do I explain this? And I reduced it to one thing. In Mr. Maroja's time, the supplier of the ruses was Ascom. So when you, when the South African customers and the commercial customers reaches, are in sixes and sevens, they would look to Ascom and say, Ascom, you are the supplier of the last resort. We expect you to give us electricity. The Electricity Regulation Act changed that. When we were the supplier of the last resort, we did a plan, we called it an ISAP plan. You remember that? Integrated Supply Electric Plan. That is the same plan that told us that by 2007, we'll run out of picking capacity. In 2010, we'll run out of base load capacity. Now we have, we are no longer the supplier, Ascom is no longer the supplier of the last resort. The supplier of the last resort is now Department of Energy in terms of the Electricity Regulation Pursuant to that, Department of Energy has Integrated Resource Plan. Now, the country looked to the Integrated Resource Plan to keep the lights on and to decarbonize the electricity sector in the future. The Integrated Resource Plan gives effect to the electricity policy of the country. Now then, the question becomes, what is the electricity policy of the country? I don't know. And I don't think you know. And I don't think you know. I don't know what is the electricity policy of the country. What I do know is that the Integrated Resource Plan gives effect to this policy. The best I can say is that as a country, we seek to decarbonize the electricity sector because we believe that global warming is a reality, and we, and we are not denialist. We do not dispute that HIV causes AIDS. We therefore do not dispute that the carbon emissions in our power stations causes global warming. And because we do not dispute that, we then adopt a path to decarbonize the electricity sector. And that becomes our policy. Together with that, we also are of the view that we need security of electricity supply today and into the future. So we need to decarbonize the electricity sector. We need the security of supply, and we need to do so at the cost and pace that the country can afford. All that are put together into the Integrated Resource Plan that was gazetted in October 2019. The assumption in this plan is that we will build 1,000 megawatt of solar every year until 2030. We'll build 1,600 megawatt of wind every year until 2030. Together, we call it a renewable technologies, 2,600 megawatt. That is why between the five is 2,600 megawatt. We also have cogeneration options, 500 megawatts a year, together 4,000 megawatts up to 2030. And then we've got 3,000 megawatts of gas by 2027. The Integrated Resource Plan also says, the energy mixing the plan requires nuclear to be developed from today, and the earliest time we can bring nuclear will be 2032. Start developing it today, and it must be 2,500 megawatts. And the regulators approve that with conditions. Now theoretically and ordinarily, if we are, as a country, completely fixated to implementing the Integrated Resource Plan that is, that was gazetted in 2019, within the megawatts I've explained, we should not load shed, but we are load shedding. The reason we are load shedding is because part of the input into the Integrated Resource Plan is the performance of generation Ascom plant. The assumption in the Integrated Resource Plan is that Ascom must perform at the energy availability factor in 2021 of 70%. It is no coincidence that the target in Ascom of the energy availability factor is 70% because that 70% is an input of the Integrated Resource Plan, and therefore Ascom must meet that. The 70% or in 2021 must get to 75% in 2023, 2025. Now, if that happens, we should not have load shedding, we will have security of electricity supply, and we will decarbonize the electricity sector. The decarbonization plan of the electricity sector, you'll find it in figure nine of the Integrated Resource Plan. The missing link is that the jockey at Ascom today thinks Ascom is a dead horse, and therefore he cannot deliver 70%, 70% of the EAF. That's a problem. And we think that he cannot, he cannot be held accountable. So, so if you're asking, Mr. Coco, and I wrote about it, and if some of you go to my Twitter, you'll find I've published an opinion piece today about what needs to be done to stop load shedding. And I say something, I, I'm saying it's simple. We have, I'm an engineer. My infrastructure experience in engineering under Mr. Maroja was simple. You may used to tell us, work the plan. Don't plan as you go. You have the plan, you work your plan. As opposed to execute first and then plan as you go.
So let's, let's pause for a moment. I want to go to the earlier points you made, and I'll pick up some of the issues that you've mentioned here. You say that demand for electricity then, 2009 thereabouts, was actually lower than what was being produced. And now it's even lower in 2021 than, what we're consuming today is lower than what we're consuming then.
Correct.
And we have capacity to generate up to 52?
52,000 megawatts, yeah.
52,000 megawatts. In 2009, we did not have a Cusile or Medupi power plant, right? We now have those on top of everything else. And I think for, you know, ordinary folk like some of us, it doesn't make sense that the demand is lower. Does it mean, I mean, two parts to my question. Does it mean that the productivity in the economy is low if the demand is low? One. Number two, with all that 52,000 megawatts that you mentioned, and yet we consume 35, what's happening to what, 19,000, 17,000 megawatts in the meantime? And why do we have load shedding at this stage? Something does not add up here.
Yeah, I think without confusing you with the, the numbers, because we, you know, I think as engineers, we get, we get really into the numbers.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think obviously for, for external factors, demand has gone down. And I think 2020 was a bad year, right? Because the 2021 results, the bulk part of it is in, in the 2020, and the pandemic, obviously killed, killed demand. And generally, I mean, the South African economy is actually a resource economy, it's a money economy. When resources go up, we go up. When it's go down, we go down. So when resources are struggling, our, our, our economy is going to struggle, and consumption is going, is going to go down. So those are the factors that I think brought demand down. But to your point is that we have a system that has got almost 12,000 megawatts extra that it had in 2009, but is struggling to cope. And the issue is really about plant performance. The question is, what is in the plant performance that is creating an 85% availability factor to a 64 or a current?
57.
It's 57% as we speak, but I'm talking about the 2021 annual report. It talks about 64%. But I think one of the other points that I want to raise, you see, the biggest, I think, issues that South Africans should appreciate is not only looking at Ascom as the challenge. We've got state-owned enterprises which are challenged. And just before leaving Ascom and after leaving, after leaving Ascom, one of my obsessions was to say, how did this huge state-owned enterprise, Ascom being one, which is now 100 years old, and it was at some point the 10 largest utility in the world with many other athletes? How did it arise out of the South African society? And I mean, the SASSO's, the IDC's, the, the transnets, the, you know?
SAA's.
The SAA.
Yeah.
All of those arose, and they didn't arise over a, a, a very long period. When you go to 1895, and you look at the country's industrial base, it's, 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 you know, it's scattered, it's, but you go 55 years later, 1950, South Africa is as industrialized as any European country. Integrated power system, integrated transportation system, airlines, post office, telecommunications. What happened? And of course, this is only on the, on the, on the public side. On the private side, we've got some of the biggest mining companies in the world, Anglo, the Beers, Rand Mines. And, and when you go, and I had the privilege to work in some of these, this, you know, institutions. I worked at Western Deep Levels. It's a gold mine that goes four kilometers underground. It breaks record in terms of deep level mining, and the whole ecosystem talks to an evolved industrial complex that is as best as you can get in, in the world. So the question for us, I mean, as South Africans, you say, how did it arise? What was the inspiration? What can we learn? As we try to solve Ascom, what can we learn to build a new industrial base that is as good as, you know, and can actually begin to deal with our current challenges? And that has been my obsession. And I'll say some of them, but that has been my obsession to say. So, 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 so going back to, to the issues of then and now, 2009 and, and now, and I think the, the biggest story, and I think I want to summarize, the biggest story is plant performance. And, you know, those are the things that I think we need to unpack.
Sure. In fact, let's move from plant performance.
Right.
Take straight to Marcelo Coco to explain, because you've worked in plants yourself, and as you say, you know, over 30 years' experience within Ascom. I mean, what's different in terms of getting the plants to perform then as compared to now? What's, what's, what's the new approach? As I've indicated already, with two additional or even more plants that have been added to the fleet of plants that you have.
Tim, the demand is dropping by 2% to 3% a year. So if you look at the demand and you project, you'll realize that every year, the demand is 2% down, and the demand will continue to drop, and there's reasons for that. In 2015, we did not have, we, we only had one unit at Medupi, unit six. Today, there's six units at Medupi, one day broke it. So there's five now. We did not have Ingula. We did not have Cusile. And yet we kept the lights on without burning diesel, and we did PCLF of 13%. If you look at the amount of unsafe energy between 2018 and today is 5.3 gigawatt hours. That's the amount we had to load shed the country between 2018 and today. The cost of unsafe energy, you'll find it in the IRP, is 87.85. The rent amounts of the cost of load shedding to the economy is 448 billion rands. That is how much load shedding is costing the economy. If the CEO of Ascom was Mr. Maroja, purely based on that cost of unsafe energy of 448 billion rands, he'll be gone. He will be gone. If you look at the plant availability maintenance factor today, it's sitting just about 10%, which means that Ascom is meeting its maintenance targets. So anybody who says to you, we are not doing enough maintenance in Ascom today with a plant, with a PCLF of 10%, is talking rubbish. He's taking you for granted. He thinks you don't know because you are executing a PCLF of 10%. If I ask engineers in this room and say, what is your target for PCLF in Ascom? They will tell you 10%. So you are doing more than your target, which means that you have the money to do the maintenance. So your PCLF is 10%, is higher than your plan. PCLF, PCLF comes with the random amounts. In my time, a PCLF of 9, 10% is about 18 billion rands. It means Ascom is spending that. I can tell you now, if you go to the annual results of Ascom at the end of this year, you'll find that Ascom has the money to execute 9% maintenance. So Ascom has no money problem to do maintenance. If somebody tells you that, it can only be somebody who has never done it. Let me finish.
Yeah.
If somebody says we don't have the time, it can only be somebody who does not know it. The issue here is you are maintaining your car, you go fetch it out of the garage to go to Cape Town, and when it gets to Kim Valley, it breaks. That's the problem, is the quality of maintenance that you do on these machines. It's not the money, it's not the time. You've got the time to do maintenance, you've got the money to do maintenance, and this story that you require 4,000 to 6,000 more to do maintenance, again, is nonsense. You will remember when Sir Isom Matunah was the CEO of Ascom, one of the requests we made to the war room was that we need 5,000 megawatts. We said to Sir Ramaphosa then in the war room, to be able to switch off, to keep the lights on, go and procure 5,000 megawatts. But when Brand Milifat came in, that 5,000 megawatt just disappeared. We went into a maintenance festival, we did the right type of maintenance, we measured this gentleman here, Level. I measured him. I said, Level, what do you want? He comes to me, says, say, whatever, whatever, whatever. I said, Level, listen to me, Level. And this is, this is a real life conversation I had with you.
Yeah, yeah.
Level, you are the pressure part engineer. You're telling me that these units are not performing because they've got two blades. What do you want? Level says, I need this outage. I need the money. I said, Level, give me a, a report. Remember, I told you, I'm gonna give you the money, I'm gonna give you the time, you must write your resignation letter and sign it. I will date it.
Sorry?
I told him that. Because all what you're asking me is, as a leader, I will give you, my job as a leader is to give you the resources you want. You must not fight over the resources. I get paid for that. You want money to do maintenance? You want to do the time for maintenance? I will give them to you. Once I give them to you, in exchange, you give me your resignation letter, I will date, I will date it. Because once you've executed them, once you've spent the money, with the maintenance time, now I take my car out of the garage, Level? This is what you promised me. I'm going to Cape Town. I must get there. It's like taking a Boeing out of the garage. This Boeing must take off. It must take off on a plane takeoff. It must stay on board, in a steady state. It must land. You asked me to give you the money, I gave you the money. You asked me to give the outage time, I gave it to you. Hey, it's my turn to demand from you now. I will first give you a red, a yellow card, and I'll first give you a couple of red cards. The rest, you go. Then you're gone. That is a real life. You talk to everybody that worked for me, that's how we put it right.
I just want to understand the concept of the quality of maintenance, right? Because you say, the money is being spent, all of those things are being done, but we stay, we experience load shedding, and that remains the issue that you can call it this, you can call it that. What is different between good quality maintenance and bad quality maintenance? Because if it's been done, and the amounts of money that you mentioned are being allocated to make sure that the maintenance is done, then we should be getting the performance that we need out of those, out of those plants.
Tim, we are engineers. I don't know what car you drive. Your car has telemetry, it's got telemetry data. It gives you online board. When you run out of diesel, it says, go to the garage, right?
Yeah.
In your dashboard, in your car, when you go and you open there, you'll find a big book like that. And most of us don't open that book. The manual. In that manual, there is a maintenance plan for your car. So when you take this car to a garage, the artisan or the technician says, it's a 20, it's a 20,000 kilometer service. He then pulls out the manual, says, in the manual, in the, for the 22,000 megawatts, this is what I have to do. He, he then executes that. When you go back at the 45,000 megawatts, he picks up, he goes to another chapter, he says, this is the maintenance plan. The maintenance plans of Ascom, I did that, they're all in SEB. When you go for a GO, the maintenance plans are there. Implement them. What has happened here, Chief? The politics interfered with how Ascom was running. You know, one of the things, I think you, you used to talk about it, when you set up a complex organization like Ascom, you need to, you need to set it up so that when the layer at the top leaves, the organization must continue to run. Don't interfere with the, with the organization. One of the things that we did in 2007, the average age of the plant was still 70s at that time. John Beck was still there. John Beck said to me, Mr. Coco, this plant is not young. You understand the bell curve. You cannot operate and maintain a generation fleet that is 37 years old as if it's 10 years old. You cannot do that. A fleet that is 37 years old is like a fleet that is new. It is more engineering intensive, right? You no longer need operations and maintenance capabilities, you need design capabilities to support. So we then set up a centralized engineering services, centralized maintenance services. And the core competency of this centralized engineering services was to acquire the engineering know-how that you require when the fleet is aging.
Okay, let's pause for a moment. I want to go back to Jacob Maroja, to the point you made. I'm coming back.
Yes.
To you in a moment. How many people were, during your time at Ascom, did you employ? Did you have under the employ of?
About 40,000 employees.
All right. Today, there, how many?
I think it, I don't know, I, I don't know the exact number, but I think it's probably 45 or something like that.
About 45.
About 45. Now, again, this is a, a person who's not involved in engineering, who does not understand these things, but I have a working sense of organizations, that if you have an increased staff complement, it means you've it means you've increased capacity and that the performance of the organization overall should show, indicate that you needed the five thousand additional people that you have, who then will add to the production of energy that is bigger or higher than what you were, eh, we were producing with, eh, with the forty thousand that, that we have. So why do we have five thousand more people at Eskom where Eskom is producing or the demand for whatever Eskom is produce, the energy that Eskom is producing is less?
Yeah. Look, I mean, clearly, the system has grown. Not only in generation, we have added more units.
Yeah.
But every year, there's still electrification that we are doing and connecting customers. So those are the, I think, the things that, eh, increase the numbers. But I think the point I wanted to make, Tim, in terms of the bigger issues that we need to be unpacking in terms of Eskom but largely state-owned enterprises. Because you talk about load shedding today, there's transport shedding.
Absolutely.
Millions of people are not able to, to ride, to work with trains.
Which, eh, which is a travesty.
There is, there is, the post office is not working.
Yeah.
Eh, even at Transnet, Transnet, when you, when you drive the entry to Durban, the number of trucks that are on the roads indicate to something that's not happening in the rail freight. Because that must be on rail as opposed to on road. So what is happening in state-owned enterprises that is bringing this shedding and shedding? And we, we have heard about water shedding. So how did this state-owned enterprise successfully get built where they are? And what is it that we're not doing? And this is the issue that I think we need to think about. And in, eh, and to use Eskom as, as an example, Eskom, when it was built, it was built to be a power industry, not a ins-, eh, 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 a company, but it was built to be a power industry. And the way it was governed, you employ industry leaders in that industry company, you give them the industry mandate, you get out of the way. Right? Because anything that they need to do must be in there. They decided which plant to, 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 eh, to, 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 to plan and build, what tariffs are required, what funding is required, what skills are required. That's the first thing. The second thing is what is called tenure. The, 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 the builders of this institution stayed in their positions for years. I mean, the first chairman of Eskom, chairman stroke CEO stayed for twenty-five years. It is required that kind of stability to build these institutions. Now, part of the problem now is that every time you change a chairman, a CEO, especially when it's not planned, it can take you two years to get things stabilized. And this is part of the problem. I mean, in the past ten years, we've got ten CEOs. That does not all go well for a company that is central to the economy of South Africa. So, so I just want to bring those elements, because sometimes we can get bogged down to what is happening in this particular issue, but we need to be thinking about the other bigger issues.
It's a very important point. But let's confine it to Eskom.
Sure.
I've always found it baffling that Eskom would have such a huge turnover of CEOs. Ten in ten years or thereabouts, right? And thus, when we have a problem with load shedding today, instead of maybe looking for solutions or looking at what may be wrong with the system, the performance of the plants, then it becomes a personal thing that it's those different CEOs, so, so we, we blame somebody. Eh, and you've had your more than fair share of blame. And I can understand, be- besides being passionate in a positive sense, wha-, why you want Eskom to work, but also passionate about the fact that you get criticized repeatedly, everything is blamed on you. Eh, including the fact that Eskom has got a debt of how much? Four hundred and forty billion rennes now? Then the sense we get or the understanding we have in the public domain is that it's because of individuals like yourself that Eskom now has such a huge debt and is underperforming. That it's, it's the history of, of Eskom, especially the most, eh, recent history of five to six years ago.
So, so Eskom has got a debt of four hundred billion rennes? And why would the debt of four hundred billion rennes cost EA F O fifty-seven percent?
I don't know. You tell me. I mean, eh, that's where issues get confused for me because of you.
Can I, can I talk about the debt?
Yeah, yes.
You see, when we started building Midu Pian Kusili, I think the, the, the bill there was about two hundred and fifty billion. And then we added Ingola, so we were, we are around three hundred billion. One of the issues we said, eh, eh, as an exco, I don't know how to personalize this, an exco. We said to, "If you, you government, if you want us to build this plant, you need to solve the funding model." Because at the time, we didn't have three hundred, three hundred billion sitting somewhere in our, in our balance sheet. Either you need to, as a shareholder, inject that amount of money or you assist us in having an elaborate funding model. You see, when Anglo wants to build a mine, before they sink the shaft, they will do a financial close. Where is the money going to come from? How much shareholder, how much?
Interest.
Exactly. We didn't have the three hundred billion, the government didn't want to put in the three hundred because they didn't have it. They said, "Look, you're going to fund this thing through tariffs and borrowings." Right? So from, from the beginning, we knew that the borrowings of Eskom is going to go up to support the build. Now, the four hundred billion didn't just come out of the air. Because it's supported by treasury, every chunk of borrowing is visible to treasury. It didn't just come, becau-, the, the reason we have the debt, eh, eh, because the shareholder didn't inject money. And Eskom didn't have that money, it has to go and borrow.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, I mean, we're having a conversation now, as, as you're, as you're explaining some of these things, I'm thinking. Because the government itself turns around and says Eskom is a threat to the country's economy.
But, but Tim, let me, let me give you some anecdotes now that Jacob is here.
Yeah.
So the CFO of Jacob was a gentleman called Jacob Mawab.
Eh, 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 eh.
Mawab.
Yeah, eh.
Bongani.
Bongani Mawab, yeah.
Bongani Mawab was
Yeah.
his CFO. Eh, and eh, his bill program was Brian Dummies. So, eh, and it was paying us on of Brian all the time. And we had exco. Eh, and we were warned that that exco was not, was not going to be nice, because we were fund, we were discussing the funding plan. And then Brian went on and he was chairing the meeting and Brian went on and on and on and on. And at the end, came to that number of three, eh, three hundred billion rennes. Bongani immediately says, "But where are you gonna get that?" Now, Bongani is a CFO. So Brian impulsively says, "That's not my job. That's your job." At that point, we are executing. Now, this is an exco of Eskom. chaired by the CEO. Brian Dummies is placing contract. The CFO says, "Mr. Dummies, where are you gonna get this money?" Mr. Dummies sits back and says, "That's not my job. That's your job." It is those things that today people say, "Mr. Koko, it's your problem." They don't bother me, because I know where the truth is. Tim, why do you place executives on a four to five-year contracts? There's a reason for that. You appoint a CEO or execu-, a group executive on a four-year contract? Because those who've done MBAs and, eh, leadership courses will tell you that if you can't turn it around in four years within your contract, don't take the job. If you can't turn around any business that you signed for in four years and four years later, you're still going to be blaming your predecessors. Don't take the job. When I became a CEO of Eskom, I never mentioned this name once. I took the glory and the pain that you left me. When you take a job, you take the job, you inherit the glory and you inherit the pain of the job. You sign a four-year contract, you must turn it around within four years.
Explain this to me, because you know, you and I live in that public space a lot. We comment on, on, on these things, but obviously you from a more insider technical point of view. And, eh, some of us comment as just members of the public on these things. And, eh, like any South African citizen, we are concerned when an important institution such as Eskom is not performing to the expectations of, eh, of the country and the economy. How do you feel and why do you think you, Machela Oko, and Brian Mulifah always get blamed or mentioned when there are problems at Eskom? And then, there's the talk that, eh, Machela and Brian are the people who brought about tenderpreneurs and there are shady deals and the Gupta's and all of that. Everything else is because of you. Otherwise, Eskom should be hunky-dory, should be performing.
Tim, I told you once, I think we're in studio.
Yeah.
And I said, eh, January twenty eighteen, I was called by deputy minister. I told you that. I showed you, I, I even made, I had a, I had a discussion recorded.
Yeah.
You know, I was, I was, I, I, I had, I, I had my game plan right at the Zondu Commission. I had my game plan right at the Zondu Commission, because I have all the conversations with the minister about on, on, on audio. I've got it recorded. I made you listen to it.
I remember that. I just forget the name of the deputy minister?
Martin.
Oh, yes.
So I had it all recorded. I was waiting for Cyril to deny it. And then I was saying, eh, he's denied, he has it, it's recorded. You see, he knew he could not deny it, because a lot of water was under the bridge. Now, he says, the minister says to me, "Mr. Koko, we just came out of a meeting and the then deputy president has decided to fire you." And he has asked the board of Eskom, that is new, this board of Eskom is new, does not know you, to go and find the reason why you must be fired. Now, listen to that. It's on audio. The president has asked the new board of Eskom to go and find the reason why you must be fired. At the State Commission, the president says, "Mr. Koko had to go because the bondholders of Eskom did not want him." This is the time where, since two thousand and two, Eskom is producing the best ever performance. And there's two things. One is that when your plant performance is better than the assumptions in the IRP, you then have, you then have surplus capacity. The consequences of this surplus capacity is that you then do not need to sign the independent power producers at the rate they say you must sign. So my discussions with the, with the deputy president and President Zuma, after President Zuma went to parliament and saying, "Mr. Koko will sign the independent power producers." I flew to Cape Town, I said, "But president, I'm not signing that, because I've got four thousand surplus capacity. Why must I do that? And in any ca-, in any event, if I sign, you must tell me how you're going to fund it." Says, "No, sign it." I said, "No, no, 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 no." It was there when you told Jacob Marocha, "Go build, you'll get the money." I'm not doing it. Give it to me in writing. That offended the powers that be. The second part that offended the powers that be was how I dealt with Tlenko. Tim, I want to tell you today. I hate how Tlenko, that was chaired by the president of the republic, treated Eskom. The CEO at that time was Mr. Marocha. And Mr. Marocha did not demand Cyril to pay back. You were a lot.
To pay back what? Sorry, I don't, eh, I don't understand.
Tlenko owes Eskom one point four billion rennes. We don't ask it, them to pay us. When I go and ask them to pay us, they say, "But you've not been paying. Who the hell are you? Who the hell are you?" I said, "Hey, you're gonna pay me." That is what broke the camel's back. All what you hear is just, eh, 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 now, remember when I was fired, South Africans were told, "This guy is a Gupta. This guy is corrupt. He will soon go to jail."
Yeah, well, I must, I must tell you that we were baffled. Eh, and some people were asking me and saying, "Wh- why are you inviting Machela Oko there? He's supposed to be in jail." And, eh, and of course, you are here. And over time, we also can understand that but the man is not in jail and we are not courts and we can't, we're just the public opinion, so to speak. So let's deal with the facts and the facts will, will speak for themselves.
I am not in jail.
Yes.
I will not go to jail. That's the takeaway from you. But remember now, put yourself back in twenty eighteen, when South Africans were told, "This guy is corrupt."
Yeah.
"This guy who chaired Eskom, he must leave without a hearing." It is not, he does not deserve a discipline hearing. He does not deserve to be charged to hit it with he, eh, the only rule, we don't want him. We are convinced he must go. Because soon enough, he'll go to jail. It's four years now. Now, when you meet Cyril, you say, "But this guy is still not in jail." Man, four years ago, you said, "He'll go to jail." This is an explanation they must give to the public. They are battling with it. At the same time, energy availability factor is fifty-seven percent. It's an embarrassment. So, Tim, we need to organize ourselves and our thought process. We need to deliver one thousand megawatts of solar every year. We need to div-, to, to deliver one thousand six hundred megawatt of wind every year. We need to deliver three thousand megawatt of gas every year. We need cogenerations of four thousand up to twenty thirty. And we need Eskom to deliver at the energy availability factor of seventy percent. And Eskom must do so within the cost structure of ZE or NERSA with zero harm to the plant, zero harm to the equipment, zero harm to the environment, and most importantly, zero harm to the Eskom reputation. That is the only way you will keep the lights on.
Well, let me add my own zero harm here. Maybe zero harm to the power 10, zero harm to the South African economy and zero harm to the citizens of the country who must now live with load shedding.
Most certainly.
Exactly, because that's what we want, you see. I mean, whatever is happening within organizations.
Yeah.
It can happen or whatever, but at the end of the day, you know, I think the, 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 the citizens, the people of this country expect much more than what they are getting. And that's the point you made, eh, Intatem Marocha earlier on. And let me ask also some of those who may, may be following us on social media platforms, eh, where we are live now, that they should use the hashtag #energycrisis for your comments and your questions. Because shortly, we will be going on a break and coming after this break, we will then go back to some of the comments that they've made. We are here, Intatem Marocha. You've been there, you saw yourself, you gave us the history of what happened in the past, okay? Now, we've got a sense of the history of Eskom, at least of the past twenty years or so. And then we are, not only are we irritated, angry and upset and disappointed and suffering and paying a price for this, whether ordinary folk or, or businesses. But we're wondering, "Why can't we just get Eskom to work, to work the right way? There are plans, you've mentioned them, eh, Machela Oko." Wh- what is it that should be done from your point of view that could quickly help us get somewhere?
Look, I, I think for me, as I've indicated, maybe we, we need to start with an ending mind. Eskom was, was built as a platform for industrialization, and it did. We are one of the most industrialized countries probably in the world and certainly in the African continent. We've got some mega institution in the industrial space. Now, the, the ending mind is that where do we want to go from here? Because we should not fixate it on what is the problem, how we fix. We need to be saying, "Where do we want to go from here?" One of the issues in South Africa is that the South African economy was built on the mining industry. And the Eskoms and the Transnet were built to support the mining industry. The next question is, what is then the industrial gig of the future? What is the base that we need to build? And once we understand that, how do you power it?
Yeah, but, so, 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 eh, don't lose track of mind.
Yeah.
A person might, might wonder. I'm listening to you. It makes sense what you're saying. So we have people who can think. Why do we, we run things like we are not a thinking people anyway?
So I go back to the fact that if we want to build a globally respected Eskom, first of all, you must deploy in that institution. first of all, you must deploy in that institution globally respected power, power people. And it's not about engineers only. It's the whole spectrum. And the question you must ask, do we have them? Right? So you, I mean, let me give you an example. When Dubai says we're going to build an Emirates airline that is going to be globally competitive, they went around the world and chose the best airline people. And when you go to Dubai Airport, you see what they've achieved. So if you want to build an Eskom that is globally respected, reliable, cheap, you need to start with what kind of people must be in there. And once you get those people, you get out of the way. Because you can have a situation where you put people that you trust to run the organization, but every, every second day, they're looking behind their back and being told things. So for instance, one of the issues I think about the Eskom CEO, it cannot be that an Eskom CEO, after two years, is looking behind his back whether he's, he's going to be fired or not. It doesn't happen to the chief justice. The chief justice gets twelve years tenure. There's a process to appoint him. He gets the twelve years. If he has messed up, there's a process to deal with it. In two thousand and nine, thirty-first of, thirty, thirtieth of October, I went to work. That evening, I came back without a job. Right?
And in the morning, you, you did not think that you would have lost the job?
No, no, I didn't think so. I didn't think so.
Yeah.
Right? So, 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 a chief executive of the tenth largest power utility goes to the work in the morning. In the evening, he's got, he's got no job. Right? And it has happened to me. I mean, I remember when Machela Okoku and four other executives were, were taken out. One evening, this, this, this announcement, a CEO, a CFO, and two executives, gone in one night. And what did the rating agency do? That same night, or same day, or the following day, junked Eskom. Right? So you cannot run an institution of this size and importance.
Sure.
When the people at the top can go to work in the morning and come back without jobs. So, so those are the things that I think we need to be thinking about, not only at Eskom, but across. So, 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 so this is, you know, those are the things that will help people solve the issues at Eskom.
Yeah, and I, I like the point that you mentioned of having the, the end in mind when you deal with Eskom and the other related state-owned enterprises. I mean, the railway system, for instance, which depends on Eskom. And then must carry coal to Eskom and carry goods from the South African economy for export to harbors and so, and the harbors must work, and the airlines must work. Now, when all of those things come apart, what happens to that industrialized status of South Africa? But we'll, we'll continue with that point in a moment. I just want to go back. You mentioned something about zero, zero tolerance for the damage to the reputation of Eskom, as well as to the, the reputation of individuals like yourself. I get a sense that you think that, or you know this for a fact, that there's too much politics in Eskom besides the technical things, besides the engineering things that we can talk about, that have a, 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 a very corrosive effect on how the organization is run. And for you personally, that, that has been a very serious experience with very serious repercussions to your reputation as a person.
Most certainly. And I fear that directors will follow the same route. My submission is this. Politicians must get out of the Eskom kitchen.
They are in the kitchen?
They must get out of the Eskom kitchen.
I, I hear you, but are they in the kitchen?
Definitely.
Okay, explain the kitchen and then, and then support your statement.
You only have, must have listened to the press, to the submissions in parliament yesterday to have a feel of who's actually running Eskom. And, 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 and directors might, might be cordial and political, but we can, we can see the role of Praveen Godan. We can see it. It's, it's damaging to Eskom. Now, if you think politics don't run Eskom, let me give you an anecdote. Couple of days before the elections, local elections, we were in stage four. And then overnight, load shedding has stopped. A day after the elections, there was load shedding. What do you think happened there?
Well, we think people like yourself are magicians, you see. You can, you can wave your magic wand, and then the load shedding will go. That's what I, what I expect, and I think many people expect that.
You were in stage four before the elections. Jesse DiWatte comes out on TV and says, this is, this can't go on. We talked to Minister Godan, and he took leadership, and they went to address the nations, and they stopped load shedding, and two days later, he's back. If you want a classical example of politicians in Eskom kitchen, that's a nice case study for you. Because there is no way that you are in stage four. Stage four means you are four thousand megawatt short. Four thousand megawatt is the size of full candle unit. Overnight is available. The elections come. Overnight, it disappears.
Or so you're getting revolted, you know. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah. Tim, let me, let me say this. Let me say this in tongue-in-shake. If you think that, if you think that the load shedding caused damage to the ANC performance in the local elections, in twenty twenty-four, load shedding will remove ANC out of power.
Okay, you want to make a point? I want us to take a pause.
No, no, I just, I just want to come to this issue around political interference. I think in South Africa, we have made, we have confused state shareholding with state management. Right? There are examples around the world where state-owned enterprises, I've given you Emirates, it's a state-owned. Arriva is a state-owned in France. What, what is the EDF, state-owned?
Yeah, the French.
French utilities. But the idea is, it's not state management. State management meaning, I mean, I mean, when I look at the current chief executive going to the portfolio committee to make presentations, in the morning, he was talking to South Africans. In the afternoon, he's in parliament, he's being questioned. You ask yourself, when is he having time to think about the utility of the future? Right? So, so, and for me, he, if you're building a utility of the future, his daily or his, his focus, or where he, he must be, he must be talking to other global utilities in China, in, in, in France, to say, how did, how are you building the new utility? But he spends a lot of time, and I can tell you now, in my experience, offline, he gets lots of calls from state officials that are saying this, or this, or the other. Now, what?
State officials, politicians?
Exactly.
Yeah.
So, so what I'm saying is, put people you trust in a particular entity, let them grow the entity. You have metrics to measure them, not on a daily basis. A shareholder, it's on an annual basis. The board on a quarterly basis. Let them get on with the job. If you don't trust them, they mustn't be there.
Okay. I just want to go, for us to pause for a moment, but you may want to make a comment here on, on what Jacob Maroja has just said.
Politicians must get out of the Eskom kitchen. They must appoint the board, and they must leave the board to go on with the business. I can tell you now, irrespective of what the board of Eskom is telling you, it is not the case. Now, Tim, we must talk about the hundred and thirty-one billion rands that comes out of COP twenty-six.
Yeah, yeah.
We must talk about the Eskom debt, and at the rate, at the right time, you will probably, because I have a couple of views on that.
Okay, but we, we're going to take a comfort break, as I indicated, because I think many people who are here want to engage you, and I want to give them an opportunity. But so far, so good. Thank you very much for being with me and being candid with us on what the issues are. So, South Africa, we hope that, you know, one conversation at a time, we will somehow help to improve the situation in our country. I'm with Jacob Maroja and Machela Okoku. We'll be back ten, fifteen minutes.
Shh. Ten, nine, eight, seven, six...
Next is Al Kifak.
Five, four, three, two... Yeah, here we are once again and we are talking the energy crisis in South Africa in the context of the load shedding that's taking place in the country at the moment. Something that has made all South Africans become extremely concerned about the future of the country, particularly the performance of the economy as well as the quality of life of people. And we invited people who have fastened experience of how Ascom operates. The former CEO of Ascom, Jacob Marroja, is here. The former CEO of Ascom, Marcela Coco, is here as well. And we had a very long chat, I must say, earlier on and thank you very much, gentlemen, for agreeing to stay with us until this time. We are on Twitter Live, we are on YouTube at this time, we are also on Facebook Live at this time. But I think the opportunity to ask questions should go to some members of the audience who are here with us this evening here at Shaguma Midrand. And we've selected about six of the people who are here. There are many who are very upset that they won't get a chance to ask questions, but we can't talk forever, unfortunately. So I have the first person and I think it's Tulani, if you may take a seat. And let's give Tulani a microphone and very nice, brief and sweetly we'll ask his question. So Tulani, welcome, go ahead.
Thanks, Tim. Good evening. My name is Tulani and my question is directed to Mr. Coco. With regards to the Coos Plus mine in Ascom, I might not know what is entailed, the contracts between Ascom and the Coos Plus, but I want your take in terms of, from a financial point, is it, as a beneficial, both on what's entailed on the contract and/or what might actually be happening now to both Ascom and to us as taxpayers. Thank you.
Then go ahead.
You know, am I audible?
Yeah.
Yeah. The Coos Plus mines are very painful to me. The Coos Plus mines belongs to Ascom. The surface rights belongs to Ascom, the mining rights belongs to Ceriti. Ceriti is basically a mining contractor to Ascom. That's all what it is. They have not been capitalized, so the cost structure is very artificially low. But I, I am going to be very opportunistic and tell you what I wanted to do, what I wanted to do with Lengke. The pit in the Lengke at Optima Mine has got 10 million tonnes to 12 million tonnes a year. Six million tonnes of that to Hendrina Arnold requires 5.5 million. And my aim, and I could foresee, I saw ahead of time, that the coal costs are going to be a problem for Ascom. And I wanted the whole pit at Optima for Ascom. And I wanted six million tonnes, five million tonnes of that for Hendrina, 5.5 million tonnes of that for Arnold and two million tonnes of that for Cleed. And had we been successful, we would have changed the cost landscape for Ascom for the better. I sense that Ascom is not prepared to go toe-to-toe with the Coos Plus mine suppliers to get the cost right for the rent per tonne. And let me give you a very simple economics. Ascom tariff is regulated, we've got a regulated tariff. The biggest input cost of Ascom is coal and it's going up by 17% year-on-year. It's a death spiral for you. You can't have a regulated cost where the regulator keeps your cost at around 15%, including the regulatory clearing account, but your mining costs are going up at 17 cents year-on-year and you are prepared to take that. South, the whole of South Africa produces 200 tonnes, 200 million tonnes of coal. Richard's Bay can only take 90 million tonnes of coal. The whole 120 million tonnes goes to Ascom. You are the stronger person here. But then again, I'm not joking, so I cannot fight anymore. If I was there, I would fight it, my brother.
Okay. Well, thanks very much. Let's get another question. In fact, I wanted to follow up on an earlier question, but let's pause for now and hear from one of the members of the audience here who also wants to ask a question and then...
Oh, sorry. Hi, my name is Natasha Piri. I just want to follow up on my colleague, Usang Ghelemasego's question that he posed to Andre Dorita about a week ago. Do you think, okay, to you, that their job and to you, that they, Coco, do you think there is consequence management for Ascom? Do you think, I just want to get your sentiments, do you think that Andre Dorita should step down and the Minister of Public Enterprises? Short and sweet. Thank you. Bye.
You go first, sir.
Look, I think once you start personalizing things or whether people should step down or not. For me, the issue is what is the end in mind? And you need to judge the governance and the people in the governance against the end in mind. And as I've indicated, we need to be saying, if the end in mind is to build a globally respected, globally competitive power system, not only Ascom, a power system. We need to be saying that people in the governance of those should be the best that we can get. We should give them the best pay that we can give them. We should give them the best security of tenure that we can give them and then leave them alone to do the work. I think to say Dorita must go or not, I think is neither here nor there. For me, the bigger question, where do we want to go? And if we clear where we want to go, do we have the right governance structures and the leaders to take us there? Thanks.
Thank you.
Natasha, a belated happy birthday to you.
Oh, thank you.
Hey, man. Hey, man.
So if you, I think Natasha is setting me up.
Okay.
And I will not allow myself to be set up. So if you read the newspaper today, News 24, by... The News 24 goes to, goes like this. There's an onslaught against anti-doritors by people associated with state capture. And the intention is to get Doritos to go because the real fight is the 131 billion rennes that Mr. Coco wants to come in and loot it for the Guptas. So Natasha...
The Guptas are still in play?
So Natasha wants me to say Doritos must go, then it makes headlines. I will not go there. What I can tell you, Natasha, is that I don't believe that Ascom has got the required leadership that is required. That part I can tell you, that if you look at the challenges that Ascom is faced with. The challenge, the current energy availability factor is 57%, it must get to 70% with zero harm within the cost of NERSA. I know what it takes to stop load shedding. I know what it takes to run a complex business like Ascom. I know what it takes, which Jacob Marroja, he was my boss, I know what it takes to behave like him and he did well. I do not believe Ascom has that kind of leadership. I'm sorry.
All right, let me ask, okay. And I'll give the, I'll give members of the audience the first opportunity before I ask my question. You go ahead, sir.
Good evening again. My name is Tembingosi and I've got questions directed to both of you, Mr. Marcela and Jacob. With, Ascom has an installed capacity of 46 gigawatts. You have the additional IPP, which I would say is insignificant due to the numbers it generates, but the peak demand is normally sitting around 29 gigawatts on a normal summer day. So with the PCLF of 10% and the UCLF of 10%, we are able to do proper maintenance and meet the demand. There are some instances that I believe that this, the installed capacity has been reduced by putting off some, some of the units at some stations on hibernation because the funds were not released for maintenance. But the question is, we heard Evra High Felt steel going down. We had some shafts at Subanya Gold going down, which were drawing too much power from the grid. Why are we failing to meet the demand of 29 gigawatts when we have 46 gigawatts of installed capacity? That is the question that I would like to ask. Thank you.
You want to go first?
Yeah, look, I think, I think the question, maybe the discussion, the question was answered in the following way. The biggest issue is not whether we've got enough installed capacity, we do. The biggest issue is the performance of that installed capacity and it's reflected in the, you know, energy availability factor. And the question is, what underlies that? And for me, it's not, I mean, it's difficult for me to say it's this or the other, but that is the biggest crisis around the availability of plant to meet the demand.
Thank you.
So, so the, I will play you back what Ascom says. Ascom says we are not able to meet the demand because Mr. Coco did not do midlife refurbishment of the plants. That's what Ascom says. Now, Tim, let me take this opportunity to deal with that. Every 12 years, you open the HP turbine.
Yep.
And you overhaul it. Every nine years, you open the LP, the IP turbine and you overhaul it. Every three years, you open the LP turbines and you overhaul it. Every 50,000 hours, you open the generator and you overhaul it. We have a concept in Ascom that says that turbine leads the boiler, the boiler follows. So all the refurbishments in the boiler are done within the maintenance intervals of the turbine and they follow the turbine. We have replaced the front piece, the duva, we've replaced the headers at Matla. There is no teleperm system in Ascom except at Tutuka Unit 4, 5 and 6. There is no station in Ascom that has not had a half station shutdowns for what we famously call T1s and T2s. That's a midlife refurbishment. So again, it's only people who do not know that will say that. Let me also say to you from the outside, what is catching Ascom? It's not the boiler and the turbine, no chupiks we've got, but I can tell you what catching the, it's the balance of plant. It's those long rubber things that are catching Ascom.
Long rubber things?
Yeah, the long rubber things, not that rubber, the long rubber things. It's, it's the cooling towers, it's the diminuter, it's the balance of plant. Now, let me tell you, when we designed the balance of plant, and now I, I look old now. We designed the balance of plant to have the reliability of 95% and every critical components in the balance of plant has got redundancies. Therefore, you don't need a midlife refurbishment in the balance of plants because you've got redundancies and we did it for that. The dim plants are designed with 150% redundancy, 50% on load, 50% on region, 50% on maintenance. The clarifiers, 50%, on load, 50% on maintenance. That's Ascom I know, Tim. This Ascom that they are talking about, I don't know.
Sorry. Haagit sehekialla.
The Ascom that I know, I just explained it to you.
Yes.
The, you know, I'm waiting for the journalists, I'm waiting for the journalist to ask me, why didn't you do a midlife refurbishment? So I'm going to tell you, you only had that concept from under the ratings, what does it mean? That will be my response. What does it mean?
But I want to, I want to ask you a question on the back of exactly the statement you've made.
Yes.
If you explain it in the manner that you have, one would like to believe that that's a given, right? It's an operating system or procedural, procedure system, whatever you call it.
Yes.
That therefore, what should happen is that whoever comes in will just follow it. It doesn't matter who's in charge, that thing is what must be done anyway.
I, I, I think so, Tim, but I, what is happening here is that you, we have allowed people to tell excuses. They're looking for excuses. The excuse was wet coal, the excuse was state capture, the excuse was, there are just too many. Now the excuse is PFMA. The excuse was conveyor belt. Now they, now we hear that the excuse is the public finance management system that does not allow us to get the right supplies. And all what they're saying there is that when, what is this contract? There's a term they call, what do you call them?
Agreen.
Evergreen contracts. All what they're simply saying to you is that the PFMA is making it difficult for us to have the evergreen contracts. That's all what they're saying. We have our own contractors, we like them, but the PFMA is just preventing us from employing them. Therefore, deal with the PFMA so that we can go to our natural, old, evergreen contracts. That's all what they're saying. It's got no relationship with keeping the lights on. Okay.
No, thank you. My name is Papano Pasha. Gentlemen, I just...
Um, gentlemen, I just wanted to, uh, to ask this question. Um, since I've been listening to you and the questions that have been posed, it seems as if we are working from a, a preposition that assumes that the challenges or the main challenges at Eskom is governance, it's leadership, refurbishments and so on. And I, I, I think we're not really dealing with the issue and the crisis at hand, uh, which is, uh, that Eskom is being deliberately collapsed. That's a reality, and I thought that would speak to that.
I, I would ask you to...
Yeah, I, I will, I will, I will. Um, we would know, and, and in fact, you've, you've said it. You, you've spoken about a director, if whether he can explain what is refurbishment, sorry. Um, and we can go back to the late Ntate Echabu. Um, it is quite evident that the people who have been put there do not have the relevant expertise. And if you listen to, uh, different ministers, uh, Ntate Godongwani has just recently said and admitted that the coal power stations are going to be sold. We have not asked, uh, sold, uh, or leased. We've not asked if they are sold or leased, what's going to happen to them? Because now we're talking about decarbonization and so forth. So, uh, and, and I'm just saying that, um, if, if the two gentlemen can actually speak to that, I'm making a proposition, I'm saying that Eskom is being deliberately collapsed. I'm also saying that our leaders in government have got interest in Eskom, and we all know that. Now, what needs to happen? Because we can't just sit here. You are there as engineers, you are the, you, you have the solutions, but you've deliberately been ostracized. Now, from a level of society, what needs to happen? Uh, because this state entity that has been there for years, you know, it's shutting down.
Sure.
Yeah, sure. Thank you, thank you, Katimidis.
Thank you.
You want to go first, or go?
Look, look, obviously, it's very difficult to confirm that there's a conspiracy to deliberately, uh, destroy Eskom for nefarious purposes. It's actually difficult, and I, I mean, I cannot confirm that. But what you, I mean, what you alluding to is, given that we see that things are falling apart, but there seems to be people who could, within the country, be deployed to deal with these issues. What is behind not deploying? And as I've indicated, what is the end in mind? If the end in mind, you want to build, rebuild that globally respected Eskom, what is then the formula? Now, if a formula is something different, and when you look at it, this does not smell, doesn't look like we're building. It looks like we're doing something else. Of course, society will become suspicious. But I cannot confirm that I know for sure that that's what's happening.
Papano, I, I have a different view. I think where you are going, and I, I, I partly agree with you, but I've got a different explanation. I think the center is not holding. I also don't think that, um, our leaders understand the plans they have on the table. I, I don't think so. So we have IRP 2019, I, I disagree with part of it. But it's a plan of the country. What does the plan of the country say? It says we'll have renewables, we will decarbonize. But it also says Eskom must perform at a particular energy availability factor. And over time, we will have a restructured electricity supply industry. Then we have the Minister of Finance saying, we've made a mistake in the last 13 years. Our focus to fix Eskom was a mistake. That was Minis, that's Minister Godongwana. What Minister Godongwana does not understand, and the President said the same thing, is that the evolution of the electricity supply industry requires new build, independent power producers, but it also requires a functioning Eskom. It's not either or. So when Inokodongwana says, we've made a mistake on focusing in the last 13 years to fixing Eskom, we must focus on the security of supply and build more IPPs. On a different day, when you meet him, he says, we've put all our eggs in, in, in a basket called Eskom, and that was a mistake. I think the government has given up on Eskom. And the reason they've given up on Eskom is that when they fired me and they fired Brian, they, since then, they've done anything and everything to fix, to fix Eskom, and it hasn't worked, and they don't know what to do anymore. I honestly don't think that our government that, uh, 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 knows what to do next with Eskom. They've tried what they could do, and they failed.
But what's going to happen to us then? Because, you know, I mean, load shedding, people can take it up to a certain point, right? As we know, and not only as, as, as human beings, as individuals, but I mean, the system, the economy, obviously...
If there's one message, if there's one takeaway, you can forget everything that I've said. If there's one takeaway that you must not forget, is that we have an electricity supply plan. It's a plan for the country. We must work that plan. That plan simply says Eskom must perform at the energy availability factor of 75% by 2024. It's not a choice. It's not a choice. We are doomed if that does not happen. It is also not a choice that we must build 14,400 megawatt of solar, of renewables by 2030. It is not a choice that we must build 3,000 megawatt of gas by 2027. It is not a choice that we must build 4,000 megawatts of cogitogens by 2030. It is not a choice, it's not exclusive choices. We have to do all of that. And everybody, in, in all these things in the plan, they have got responsible people. The DM, the Department of Energy is the supplier of their last resort, but it delegates some responsibilities to others. The responsibility to fix Eskom is with the current accounting officer or authority at Eskom. It has to fix Eskom. It can't give excuses. By all means, forget Koko, I'm irrelevant. You have these assets. You, we, the reason we call you guardians, the reason we call Eskom people guardians is because they manage these assets on the behalf of the public. They are competent people that we've borrowed these assets.
Sure.
They must manage them, and we should not take no for an answer. And if by any means, the accounting authority at Eskom thinks that Eskom is an old car, can't be fixed, or Eskom is a dead horse, then it should not be there, then you must give way.
Okay? Let's get the next question. Would like to, to hear the next question. But I, I want to add something then, as a follow-up question. There's a, according to reports, there's a view that corruption is destroying Eskom. And that, that's actually, um, there's a dead horse on one side, and then there's the elephant in the room on the other side, to use another metaphor.
Tim, Tim, we, we, if Machela Koko is corrupt, he must go to jail. If Machela Koko is stealing money, he must go to jail. If anybody in Eskom is stealing 100,000, 100 million...
Per month of fuel and all of this.
He must go to jail. It's, why do you argue about that? When I dealt with corruption at Kusile, I was Lisan. I did not ask for permission. I told the board, you fire me, it's okay. But those guys at Kusile must go, Elamul Khan. And they must go out. You know how I work. There's processes, I say, I think this guy is stealing money. I don't want him in front of me. He must go outside Megawatt Park, he must go to CCMA, we will fight it there. He does not deserve to be here. So even if Machela Koko is corrupt, he must be dealt with, just simple as that.
Okay? Right. Let's hear the question.
Okay, Bratim, um, that was not my first question, sorry. I'll be brief, I've got stage fright, so I hope I'll be as quick as possible. That was supposed to be my third question, that, um, you know, let's address the elephant in the room. That you were accused of using illicit funds of Eskom to buy a farm. You were accused that your daughter got a tender from Eskom, and you said you did not know about it. That was the, that you, you can choose to answer it or not. And, um, but my first question, the reason why I'm here is that, uh, uh, Mr. Koko's ask is... Um, um, my first question is that, uh, you know, I think we are sort of misleading people because everybody's going to live here, um, thinking that Eskom has a maintenance problem. I just read a tweet now on my phone by certified, certified, um, certified downforce Twitter. And this person is saying Eskom does, quoting you in quotes, Eskom does not have a, a money problem, Eskom has a maintenance problem, which is absolutely not true. How do you have 400 billion rand of debt and say you have a maintenance problem? And another thing, the reason why I also want to raise the maintenance issue, Mr., you touched more than adequately, you touched more than adequately, you discussed maintenance enough. But why you're not telling these people is that during your tenure, at the helm of power, at the helm of decision-making, you knew that these plants were going to go out of commission, and you did not mention that in the next couple of years, starting with Komati in 2022. Komati is gonna be half, zero megawatt, followed by Khufli. So if you think you need to buy an inverter, you need to install solar power, you better do it now. There are four stations that are going out of commission in the next couple of years, and you absolutely not touch on that. And Eskom is undertaking a very, very big project to try and repower and repurpose these power stations, either with, with gas or with PV solar, with biomass, um, 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 with, 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 uh, battery storage, I think I mentioned it. For, you discussed gas here. Did you mention to these people where the gas is going to come from? Because we don't have gas infrastructure for one. There's no gas infrastructure, and yet we are telling the people that we are going to repower with gas. What did you do? Okay, my first question before I start on a rank. My first question is that when you were at Eskom 10 years ago, you already knew that the, these plants have reached their end of life, 2022. What did you do? What did you do about it? My second question is that COP, which is, uh, the United Nations, uh, uh, Green Energy Summit that they held in Glasgow up until the 13th of November, you talked about decarbonization of Eskom plant. Do you think it's okay for Eskom to take on 193 billion rand of debt? That is a carrot that's being tangled by the Western world for us to go to green energy? When they've had hundreds of years to develop their countries using coal, we have tons, millions of tons of deposits in South Africa that we cannot use? That is my, do you think it's a penalty?
So, 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 so let's, let me, let me repeat what I said. Let me, let me repeat what I said. Eskom has got reliability targets. These reliability targets have been set in 2009 under your leadership, 801010. Those are Eskom reliability targets. The PCLF currently exceeds the Eskom reliability target. So...
Can, can you explain the PCLF?
The plant capability load vector.
Okay.
So Eskom is executing the volume of maintenance that is, that is in excess of their target.
Okay.
Which means it can fund it and it's funding it. So there's no money problem there. The country has a decarbonization plan. This decarbonization plan has nothing to do with COP26. The decarbonization plan of South Africa, you will find it in, in Figure 9 of IRP 2019. It's there, it's got nothing to do with COP90. There was no COP26 in 2019. When South Africa adopted, on the 8th of October 2019, the IRP 2019 was gazetted. And it's very disingenuous to come today and say, but then we're gonna shut down coal stations. When we decided in 2019, you were quite, when were you in 2019 when we decided? When the IRP 2019 was adopted? And what did you say? Nothing. Today you come and want to be smart? No, the decarbonization plan of the country dates back 2019. What did I do? So go to the Eskom financial statement of 2016. It is Machela Koko who said, I will not sign the IPP contracts, I will not sign the IPP agreements. I will extend the design life from 50 years to 60 years. That's in, that's in the annual report. I employed KPMG. And now that you've mentioned this, when I get home, I'll tweet the KPMG study about my plans that are adopted by the board for Komati, for Khufli, for Camden. In history, there's no blank spaces. Uh, uh, and those who read must go and read history. So if I had an opportunity with a lady that was sitting here, I'll sit here on the table, and I'll say, but you are lying. Here's the Eskom documents, here's the country's decarbonization plan. It's got nothing to do with COP26. It's a lie what you are telling now. That's if I have an opportunity to talk to her.
Okay, all right, well, let's, can you, can you continue?
Yeah. Look, I, I, I'm interested about this illicit farm, so I, I've... First time in my life I've heard about it. But I think what I want to address is this whole issue in engineering speak of age of plant. You see, sometimes we use human metaphors for engineering industrial plants that don't apply.
Correct.
You know, somebody, a, 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 a human being after 70, after 80, your heart stops and they can't replace it and so forth. But in engineering speak, you do refurbishment to keep the condition of the plant in good condition. And at a particular point, you can do even what is called life extension. You can renew a 50-year-old power station, and you can extend it another 30 years. The issue is normally the cost. Is the cost viable to do that? And will the performance be viable to do that? Because then technologies moved on, things are not efficient. But you can't just say this plant is, is, is 50 years, therefore it's old, it must be retired. I'm going to give you examples of plants I've...
You can give it pension.
Yeah, I can give you pension. I'm, I'm going to give you examples of plants I've worked there. Sarsol 2 was built in 1979. It's as old as the oldest stations in Eskom, Grille and Greener and Annot. If you go to Sarsol and say, close this thing, it's, it's old, and you are a CEO, they'll fire you on this one, because those assets still have lot of value. I worked at Western Deep Levels. That, that plant at Western Deep Levels Number 3 was commissioned in 1962. It's still one of the prized assets in the stable of Anglo-American. And it may go for, for another 30 years. It's going to depend what? We still have oil in the ground to take out? We can still do refurbishment? The economics make sense. So it is important that when people talk about age in engineering speak, they must actually be careful what they're told.
Papano, Tim, can I, can I, can I, can I say this? This is, this is... This is, this is very, this is very important. You know, if you, if you go into the media, they call you a coal man. I'm a, I'm not a renewable man, I'm nuclear coal. Because I am one of the people who took the fight in defense of the coal industry. But the scientist in me and the engineer in me subscribe to the concept that the East Global warming and is caused by greenhouse gas emissions. And the electricity sector is the biggest contributor to the global warming. And therefore, we have to decarbonize. And the decarbonization plan, whether I like it or not, is in the plan. I do not agree with those who say we must accelerate, we, we must ramp up or accelerate more than what we've decided in 2019. I don't agree with that. I'm simply saying, um, the, we must decarbonize, we must keep the, there's still things for me. You know, if, if you ask me and say, hey, Mr. Koko, what is the electricity policy for the country? What do you want to achieve as electricity policy? This is what I'll tell you. Security of supply comes first. Mr. Maroja will totally call it power quality. That's how the, the wires people, power deliverer call it. Power quality now... Power quality now and into the future comes first. We must be able to keep the lights on. Four billion runs a day of, eight billion runs a day of stage four light shading, it's a no-no. So we must keep the lights on. Whatever we do, our psychological comfort must be keep the lights on. The second thing we will do is decarbonize. Decarbonize. Uh, 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 and for me, instead of putting renewables at Komati, I'll put a modular guest, a modular reactor at Komati. Modular reactor. The, that thing is that the cost must support the economy. Those are the three things that we must achieve with a, with a, with an economic policy.
Okay. Well, uh, Samkele, how did this man?
He must, he must not shout at us.
No, good evening, gentlemen. Um, mine is very simple. And thank you for the engagements, Bratim. I hope these engagements continue even across the other perspective, which is against the tweeting engineer of, of Escom. But in simple terms, gentlemen, we've been speaking too much of the past. Let's look at the way forward. You spoke about the R I P of twenty nineteen and the energy plan of the country. Going forward, let's move away from individuals, Tareta, Praveen, all of them. What is the future of the power utility? I hear the debate on independent power producers. At your tenure in Escom, we've had many debates about our independent power producers and how certain quarters of the governing party have wanted you to sign those I P Ps and you've refused. There's nuclear on the board. There was the Russian deal, which went to the courts and subsequently with it through the air. The Minister of Energy is saying there's an energy mix document in the country and nuclear is one of those proposals. What is the future beyond independent power producers that will ensure energy generation and energy security to the economy of the country, that will stimulate that economy, that will create jobs beyond the I P Ps, beyond individuals? What is that broad plan that can be employed and implemented by government to ensure that there's energy security? And lastly, when it comes to the future of the power utility, most developed countries in this world depend on nuclear. You go to the Middle East, you go to the United Kingdom, they are all using nuclear. What is the main thrust of us in South Africa backtracking on nuclear? You've had the recent COP twenty-six in Glasgow. The Minister of Mineral Resources and the Minister of Public Enterprises are refusing to sign the deals that have been brought before Escom, which the Escom Group CEO Andre Tareta attended that particular event and ended up not giving that keynote address from a South African perspective and from an Escom perspective. So from those premise that I've just argued, let's speak about the future of energy generation in the country and how do we ensure that businesses like where we are at right now do not suffer and do not have monies incurred on their balance sheet that they cannot justify and that can, they cannot pay for because there was load shedding and there could not be business activity? Thank you.
Yeah, look, look, I'm gonna give, I'm gonna give generic, but more principle solutions. As I've indicated, that the people who build the Escoms, the Sassos, the Transnet, the way they did it was you deploy the best you trust in that industry. They form part of the governance. You trust them to do the necessary decision on behalf of the country to take us forward. If you bring it to Escom, if I had to advise the president, I would say, Mr. President, as long as Escom is embedded in the bureaucracy, you will not solve this issue. If you want to solve the issue, you're gonna have to take the governance of Escom outside the bureaucracy. You're gonna say, even if you have to go all over the world to get the best advice into some advisory board. But it is, you see, at the moment, there's politics between energy, finance, public enterprises. Now, those politics will never remove. And if Escom has to be resolved, those things must be removed. And you've got also the politics between Escom and the regulator. Currently, the regulator has said, we're not gonna give you a, an increase because X, Y, Z. But that shouldn't be. So I would, I would say you remove all of that bureaucracy, you put the Escom issue in the presidency, you get the best people in South Africa in the world to be part of that advisory board. Then you say, guys, you've got ten years, get on with it. It must also not solving, you're not only solving Escom, you must solve the entire power sector. You must solve the issue of decarbonization. You must solve all of those. But at the moment, it's scattered. Anybody can throw a spinner in the works, like Mr. Coco did when they said, let's sign the I P Ps. They said, no. Maybe rightly so. But if you really want to make a dent and create a stability in the next ten years, you're gonna have to get people you can trust, they've got the authority to execute.
Sure.
And you leave them to do it.
But the, Samkele, there's no, there's no future without the I P Ps. The I P Ps are the future. One of the things that I think I must start doing is to start to get South Africans to understand that when you talk about a plan, it's a plan, you must implement the plan. Everywhere in the world, wherever you go to China, they've got electricity plan. That electricity, electricity plan is typically fifty years. We have a plan, that plan is up to twenty thirty, it will be revised up to twenty fifty. Technically, we should not be arguing about what to do next because the plan is there. I disagree with some of the things there, but the plan is there. We must execute the plan. The supplier of the last rose is the minister. The minister issues a ministerial determination about who builds what. The debate that we must have is that what percentage goes to a state-owned company and what percentage goes to I P Ps? The nineteen ninety-eight white paper says seventy-five. Uh, we can debate about the number. But what we need to, the capacity that the country must have, it's in the plan. There's no ambiguity about it. The minister must issue every year his ministerial determinations, do so on time. Uh, and if he decides it's Escom, it must be Escom. If he decides it's another different independent, estate-owned company, it must be that. The issue is, it must be financed. It must be financed. And what, you know, where I am now, and you must have noticed my tone now, I'm not fighting I P Ps. The, the I P Ps are going to collapse themselves by the funding model. Because nobody is sitting here and saying, what is the funding? We've got the plan, what is the funding plan for this? Nobody is doing that. And that is why I want to say the center must hold. The Electricity Regulations Act tells us that the center is D O E. Quite frankly, the electricity regulations, in terms of the Electricity Regulation Act, and let me, let me be controversial here, Praveen Gurani is irrelevant. In terms of the Electricity Regulation Act, the electricity regulating act tells you who are the players. Minister of Energy must cause Escom to perform according to the plan. So we, we should be talking to Minister Mantash and say, Minister Mantash, you are low-shedding, fix Escom.
Thank you. Gentlemen, it's Victor Machela here, um, and thanks for coming. Bratim, thanks for the opportunity. Mine, it's two questions and, um, I would really, as a taxpayer and like most of us here, um, I've got a daughter who's gonna ask me tomorrow that, Papa, do you know the answer to why we have a low shedding? And while sitting here, there's a lot of reasons that you mentioned. But I wanna cut to the chase. I was reading between the lines and somewhere, Mr. Coco, you mentioned the leadership, um, and you also mentioned that, I know we've got old fleet and you said that we've got, um, plans to manage those assets. Mr. Maroha as well did mention that our, our fleet is not that old to, you know, to not be able to maintain, to maintain it at this point. So I need a simple answer for you, from you, to be able to understand why we have this low shedding. Is it a human capital issue? Because you've mentioned, I think both of yourselves, that your E A F, I've read a lot of acronyms today, that under your leadership, the E A F was over seventy percent, I think, for both of you. And right now, we're at fifty-seven percent. So for a camp, we've got forty-six thousand megawatts and I'm, and I'm asking that at this point, what is the reason to our low shedding? Is it a human capital issue or is it an old fleet? Second question is, um, yeah, Escom is sitting, got on its balance sheet about plus four hundred billion uh, in loans. Does it make sense for the country to write off that, to write off that debt as in, we take it as a continent, we remove it from the balance sheet of Escom? And are we guaranteed to have a working, um, Escom after that?
Thanks. Um, I, 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 I like your question. So in twenty ten, in twenty eleven, level you remember, what was the unit of the year in Escom? In twenty eleven, what was the unit of the year at Escom? It was Komati. And it was the oldest. So the oldest unit of the year in twenty eleven, the, the oldest unit in Escom in twenty eleven was Komati and it was the unit of the year. It was the best performing, it beat Matimba, it beat Kendra. I'm, I'm simply telling you that we, it, it performed. So, so it is not the age of plant, it's a human capital issue. Tim, there's, there's a beautiful question that was asked. What do we do with the Escom debt? I don't see any other option. But to take at least two hundred billion rand of Escom debt, put it in a special purpose vehicle, restructure the debt and put it on the sovereign balance sheet, there's no other way. The problem I have with that is that it's not going to solve the Escom's problems. It will just postpone them and they will come up again. Because the problems of Escom is simple. Any business with declining sales revenue will eventually die. If you're running a, 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 a well-established business like this, the less customers you have here, you will die. Escom every year is selling less gigawatt hours, less terawatt hours. The only reason that Escom sales go up is not because Escom is selling more terawatt hours, it is because the tariff is high. So every year you go to the regulator and says, give me an increase. The regulator give you, that's the only reason why your revenue, Escom sales or Escom revenue goes up.
And the cost of coal as well going up.
And exactly, so it does, even if you can take hundred percent of Escom debt, you are just postponing the crisis.
Sure.
Because the, the, the new tech, the new generation technologies are disruptive.
Daddy Maroha, let's hear from you and then we connect.
Well, I, I, look, a short answer to the, to the debt issue. We are with this debt because we didn't have or deal with the funding model of Escom. So by default, then debt becomes the funding model. Already that debt which is sitting on Escom is guaranteed by government. It has already caused downgrade because the, the rating agencies can see through that debt. But if Escom can't pay it, therefore we, we need to assume that at some point it's gonna come. So they were infected with it, all right? So, so if you take it to the sovereign, all you're gonna do is just chunk the several even more, all right? So we, we, we've got a serious problem in dealing with the debt of Escom because we didn't deal with it at source when we had the opportunity to say, what should we do with it? So it's a, I, I don't want to give a simple answer to a very complex.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So that, that's the, the one that I think, I can't remember the other questions, but maybe that I'll.
Well, I think the first question was, how can a parent explain to a child in his instance? What, what do you say? What causes low shedding when all of the things have been said? When everything is said and done, currently, what is the cause of the problem?
Well, I mean, the, as I said, the performance of the generating fleet is performing below par. That is the simplest answer. Now, whether it's human capital, it's ages, that's another detail that I think for somebody else can, can deal with it.
Okay, well, this is how we come to the end of it. And thank you very much, gentlemen, for making time to be with us here. And the discussion is going to continue. As Samkele suggested, there are other views elsewhere, probably from within Escom itself, that we, we need to hear from them. But I felt, let's talk to yourselves, you were insiders. At one point, you can give us a perspective from your experience on what exactly is going on within Escom. And of course, the country is in a crisis when it comes to energy and there's a lot of confusion. It's a pity we cannot get to the point where we say, these are the solutions. Well, I get a sense the solution is in the plan, the plan is not being implemented. I get a sense that the solution is in beginning with the end in mind and recruiting the best minds possible from around the world to solve the problem. And those two things seemingly are not happening. Let me also thank the people who attended this session, who are here this evening. Thank you very much. And to everybody who asked the questions, we appreciate your guts to come forward and ask the questions. And also thank the people here at Shaguma and our technical team that put this broadcast out. Until next time, but thanks again, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Tim.
Thanks, Ajins, thanks.